Like to call this regular meeting of the Portola Supervisors Board, please. Please join me in the public meetings.
I have the regions, to the right, of the United States of America and to the Republic of Sanas. One nation under God, and it is as well, we deliver to you in chapter four.
Your call, please.
All right. Councilmember Jim Murphy here. Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Piler is absent. Mayor Protem Morton.
Yes, here.
Mayor Bill Powers.
Here, thank you. I need to make a comment. This is a portion of our agenda where people in the public may address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. And let's scan the crowd. I see no hands up here in the auditorium. Anybody online?
They don't.
Do it on the line anymore.
I was willing to accept when you nodded, but, gosh, okay, fine. No one make a comment. City Communications. Let's start with the council. And let's go live.
I attended the SCORE meeting in Anderson. It was a pretty lengthy one. Approved all the budgets and all the associated agreements. SCORE is the small cities' organized risk effort, cities insurance pools. Just a couple of things out of the meeting. Contractors, any contractor now hired in a small city needs to be covered for water pollution. And especially asphalt contractors. And the second thing was the twenty-something score cities entered into a contract with Precision Concrete for for any sidewalks and repair at three hundred and eighty-six dollars a sidewalk mile. Which that was pretty good. So that's something that I might want to look into. Not long. I also attended the LAFCO meeting, but I'll let the other members of the council report their lap.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Turner.
I have nothing to report. And I'm afraid I'm boring personally, you know? Somebody should do it.
It's more.
Yes. I attended the Board of Supervisors meeting also. It was interesting they cast the tax for the LSG committee to go ahead with the fire department consolidations. The Board of Supervisors. That was the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
And LAFCO meeting. You want to report on anything?
We can start, not you.
Okay, LAFCO meeting. They approved the annexation and talked about what's going on with the Beckworth Fire or the Eastern Plumas Fire District. I think those were the two main things.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
And then I attended the transportation meeting, which is my first one in a long time, and I'll let Phil report on that. And I attended the Beckworth Fire Department meeting.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And I did attend the LAFCO meeting first, and as Mayor Protem Morton just announced, the two main items were about the LSG reconfiguration of fire districts here, as well as some interesting comments on the dissolution of Eastern Plumas Fire Connection District.
Can I make a comment on that?
Stand down?
Yeah, they're standing. They're not dissolved, they're standing down for six months. They don't have any volunteers, but one.
Right. And down in three quarters, I understand, if that is correct. Okay, standing down. Then after that, I attended the Transportation Commission meeting, where I think we approved eighteen, nineteen resolutions, something like that, yeah, and an incredible amount of resolutions.
In a very short time.
In a very short time.
It's the chair.
Our chairs. And, yeah, it was an amazing feat, a complete, as we say in France a lot. And having that, I've been working on some things that are not ready to hold, not over yet. It's just
Add one more question.
Yes.
With the announcement of Plumas News, that they're closing their doors on the thirty-first of July, what are we going to do for a newspaper of writer?
I'll give, well, do you want that answer?
No.
Okay, so actually, the Mountain Messenger has been the only adjudicated paper anyway, because they're the one that circulated. So Plumas News hasn't been the official adjudicated paper since they quit printing. But you guys have good questions regarding news in general, and I might touch upon that through a managerial work, yeah.
Good, great, thank you. And Staff Communications, anyone here from fire? Sheriff, city sheriffs available? Air quality? Hi.
Couple updates and then one other thing that's interesting, I'll do my best to explain that, but we, this year, we delivered about eleven woodsheds. Two of them were built by the Long Valley Charter School students, three by a contracted builder, and then I delivered six woodsheds to residents who build them themselves. They have been a ninety-day period to keep that woodshed. And then, in the last month, we paid out twenty-eight installations. Of those twenty-eight installs, eleven have been heat pumps, eleven have been new wood stoves, four pellet stoves, one paratene and one propane. And then, the Lawrence Burnley Laboratory is actually conducting a test, in situ test, so physically in situated, or wood stoves and pellet stoves that are operating on a normal day-to-day basis. So a lot of our EPA certification test methods are done in a laboratory under very specific circumstances, so the Lawrence Burnley Laboratory is trying to execute some tests with volunteers who are willing to allow them to come and set up their testing equipment on their roof and inside a home. So, anyway, it's a really exciting opportunity. It will give us quite a few some information about real-life wood stove use. And so basically, we'll be looking for three participants. I understand there might be like a hundred-dollar gift card or something for volunteering, but we're looking for someone with one catalytic stove, a non-catalytic stove, and a pellet stove. They all need to be EPA certified, preferably installed with our program. Some of the criteria would be that the wood stove sort of needs to be at the end of the home, so they don't have to crawl around the roof. They could do that, but it takes a lot more certification and OSHA inserts on their part, so it's a great opportunity. I think we'd get people to volunteer, otherwise, seeing me knocking on your door because it's ideal, blue, then you give me an answer, so. It's really all I have to talk it.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
You mentioned every month the number of things that you've replaced, and you say kerosene. Does air quality replace kerosene stoves?
No, we only replace old wood stoves for any of those new.
For any of those, yes, okay.
And that's a really common misunderstanding, I think. So do you have an old wood stove as collateral? We can take that and then
And replace it with a kerosene.
That's correct. And also, I want to say thank you to the public works. They've recently demolished a ton of wooden wood stoves. That's where they come, it's new, and, I mean, recently, it's a ton. Therefore, so we're really grateful for this, and to that.
There, thank you so much. I didn't see you. In managerial work.
Okay, I'll just touch upon a few things. The pool is up and running and managed very well. You know, most of the lifeguards, the young lifeguards are taking on a lot of the managerial duties and also likely we have Lindsay, who is making sure that they're being mentored well, and she said that hopefully, she does her job well enough that where she doesn't have to have the job next year. Not that she doesn't like it, but she wants to make sure that basically the kids are doing well. So, in addition to the general management of the city, we've been tasked, kind of, all of a sudden, to deal with some other things that are outside of the city, but still related to the city, one of them being fire department issues. I did meet Councilmember Morton, or Mayor Protem Morton, and I met with Beckworth Fire yesterday and EPHC to discuss the hopeful assistance from EPHC to to help possibly fund Beckworth Fire to help offset some expenses to help pay volunteers or pay people to be able to be more involved or be guaranteed to show up to some medical calls that would benefit the ambulance company as well as the fire department and mostly the citizens that need the call, especially with the new pressures that are going to be put on them and Grayville Fire with Eastern Plumas basically being shut down right now. So we had some long discussions regarding that. We had some discussions about their contract and and there's possibility, there's, you know, it's cost and then more to have the city, but we're going to discuss that after the election to see, you know, what kind of, what kind of actual numbers that that means. Regarding Eastern Plumas, you know, they're shut down, their letter says that, you know, they're open to, well, they wanted to invoke mutual aid, which was kind of a funny comment, but
You can't do that.
Yeah, that's not how it works. I don't know who really thought about that and wrote that, but, yeah, yeah, I mean, I was trying to be nice. But, so, the normally, we wouldn't have to care too much of the city, but the city's equipment is going to be used for those mutual aid calls, and that's where we have to make sure that we're 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 covering our obligations to our taxpayers regarding the equipment that's going to be used, so some of the activity that I've been doing, sort of behind the scenes, to try to make sure that both those fire departments, Grayville and Beckworth, get compensated for, eventually, to handle that call volume. There's not, you know, it's not just a regular mutual aid, it's, they're the fire department right now. I spoke with the chief in Grayville and, of course, the chief here. And my recommendation at LAFCO meeting the other day, I've kind of rescinded it because I understand the reality of something that I thought technically would have been a good idea to get that board together, have them do a contract with two departments, and in reality, that would have been the best thing, but history has proven that that board generally they don't really cooperate with the public and they don't really do the right thing. So both those fire departments have zero interest in dealing with that, so I talked to the vice chair of the Board of Supervisors today and LAFCO, and we are going to be pushing for the Board of Supervisors to take over that board and then we become a dependent district, and then afterwards, hopefully, put together the contracts so they have a funding mechanism. So that's, that's taken a lot of time out of city management stuff, but it's necessary to do.
You should probably check with SCORE regarding the use of our equipment. In the nineteen-nineties, when I was on the SCORE board, we had an issue in the city of Preston City where they responded to a structural fire outside the city. I wonder what they called mutual aid, but hadn't been requested for mutual aid, and they brought side of the car and killed six people. And it was a huge, huge lawsuit, and I'm going to declare the SCORE, so they have some pretty strict policies on mutual aid with fire.
I'll double-check. I'm going to make some assumption that when the original agreement was written with fire department before I was here, they probably did some due diligence with SCORE, but I'll definitely make sure that we're, especially with this new sort of responsibilities that are getting taken on, and the new contract will have to have something to do with that.
SCORE, acronym, what do you have?
SCORE, is that an acronym for? For small cities organized risk effort, cities insurance pool.
Okay.
Any more questions, anything on the fire, then just one more thing regarding Plumas News.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, the Board of Superv, you, you made a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to go ahead and dissolve?
LAFCO is making the right decisions. Yeah, I just, I just helped, I'm helping get
To dissolve the department?
Yeah, you don't really dissolve the department. It's, the department will still exist, except the board will no longer be governed. It'll be a dependent district under the Board of Supervisors. That's the
With the way the board is being ran right now by two individuals, I kind of agree with that.
Yeah, I was doing the way, like, which one's better?
People are terrible and have no idea what they're doing.
That's the main motivation behind just making sure it gets done.
So neither, what happens, so maybe you know, because I'm going to ask, what happens if that happens, but neither one of the departments want to take over the area? Does the area become a dead zone, kind of like what happened in Beckworth years ago? When the McCollum shop and they were in no man's land?
So as of right now, both chiefs of both fire departments have full intention of responding to the mutual aid, or the calls
The calls.
For them, under a service agreement, a contract agreement, to where they
An MOU, or does this?
A service, basically a contract, just like we have at Beckworth. So and the, the district will still exist, and then depending upon what happens with the new formation of the district, and this is just another perfectly good reason why these efforts are required. Hopefully, that passes, and then, then they'll have to address the, the eventual annexation of that district.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's kind of where I thought it was going, but I think it's how you've been checking into it more.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking.
Regarding Plumas News, I mean, there's no official capacity in the city, but of course, we were interested because it's a, you know, it's a staple of the county for, what, a hundred years? I mean, for a long time. And I did reach out to the owner and staff at Plumas News, and although they fully intend to shut it down like the article says, but they do hope that some organizations or some entity somehow continues with the effort, so there's, there's some discussion right now and hopeful and, and they're hopeful that it can continue in some fashion, especially at least online, so, you know, they still print the, they still physically print the Mountain Messenger and they print the Sierra booster, yeah, so they're not going away completely, but, you know, so I'm just part of the conversations, they help brainstorm the solutions, so.
My fear is, I highly hope that social media doesn't become the format for getting information.
They can't be the new source, and that's, yeah.
And that's the issue. Why are they stopping the online, John, do you know?
They're tired.
They're just tired.
It's a, it's a lot of work.
Yeah. I know that I, ever since they quit publication, that's where I get information, especially like the Board of Supervisors and that kind of meetings, so.
Yeah. About a few years for business in general, so. Oh, one more fun thing. I was in town last night, Grayville, has nothing to do with anything important, but I met a bicycle rider, started chatting with him, and this individual, his wife is a professional runner, and he is riding his bicycle from Truckee to Bend, Oregon. Just a fun little tidbit. I've never, I mean, really cool dude, and he's literally riding his bicycle, and I'm following him.
I found your red, I mean, his wife was riding the
He took the sprinter van back to Nance.
I thought the same.
Really unimportant information, but it was interesting.
Bicycle riders have been here in town lately?
He does, yeah.
We've been, I asked for, let's see the day coming this direction.
And he was just commenting on how really cool the trails were, even though he had to pick up his bicycle and walk through snow on some of them on the way. And
Thank you for some more, too. Okay, thank you. On the line for concerned agenda, these items are usually non-pointual, but anyone wishing to take an item off, I would be saying that, and we do so. And I'm clearly ready to land over that, so I want to make a motion. I'm going to motion to adopt resolution twenty-five forty-nine and resolution no, that's it?
Just the minute.
Oh, because you're stuck. And in the minutes for five twenty-four twenty-three and six fourteen twenty-three.
I'll second that motion.
Here you have motion there, the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, period? And by Northwood Phase One, you know, our engineer here.
I'd like to take a moment and just tell you what's going on over there, so that you're informed, if that's okay, but then it'll lead into this change order. Part of the project was, is, is sidewalk, and we have water surfaces and water meters that were going to be in the way of the sidewalk. So, the project was to relocate the water meters outside the back of sidewalk, so that we didn't have that interference. In order to do that, you have to dig down into this water main, turn off the corpse stop is what it's called, it's a brass valve, and then move those water boxes. The money is allocated for this project is primarily for surface improvements unless we have infrastructure issues. So as we dug down and to turn those valves, we found that we couldn't turn those valves, or else they were leaking severely in the ground. And so, we have, with the city staff and helped, turned off the water twice on Joy Way, so it's affected some individuals, and tomorrow, we'll do one more time, but the fix or the build order was to basically cut out sections of the water main, replace that with new PVC pipe, just a five-foot section with the new corpse stock, and then we'll have a poly pipe that runs to the water service. This is going to be a change order that you're going to see in the future, but it's something that had to be addressed in order for us to continue progress on this job. Where we're at right now is basically trying to conclude those kind of issues, and just to give you a sense for that, Jared on staff called and let me know that the water main that we were isolating, that valve now is leaking severely, so we'll be replacing that valve as well. So, it's old plumbing. We're doing our best to try to get that done. The, the, the point of all of this is, is the project had a considerable amount of money allocated, and it came through Plumas County to the city of Portola. The bid came in lower than expected, very surprising to all of us. So there was quite a bit of money that was, in essence, is not to be used, wouldn't be used for the project, except for change orders. Plumas County said to District Two, Caltrans, we'd like that money back so we can use it on other projects in Plumas County. District Two said, no, you can only use it for the project that's been allocated. So essentially, we have enough money, and we're using that money as needed. I'm not going to penny pinch, but the, the careful and consider approach is that I don't do anything that if we're audited, they say, hey, you guys spent money on things that weren't allowable. So there's a limit to how much I can do, and so I'm focused on making sure that I have a good product when we're done, but that's, that's where we're at right now, which is a segue into this change order as well. And I don't know if you had a chance to read my memo, but it basically indicated that the contractor said, as I've done on the other two projects we did, the material under these roads is, in, in many places, is very poor. I have a a three-foot-long steel probe that I use when I'm testing so creative while they're working to make sure that we, you know, excavate what's needed. And a lot of times, I can just lightly push on that probe, and it just keeps going. And these are the change orders that will be addressed at some point as well. So, what the contractor proposed, so the original project that was presented to you for adoption, to go to adopt the plans and specs and go out and bid, was I was going to remove quite a bit of material, and that would be off-haul, and quite a bit of material was going to be all-in base. And what Mr. Murphy pointed out to me on our last project was we basically built a brand-new road, but we tore up four other feeder roads going to it, because we had so many loads. So contractors propose something that they're using everywhere, I guess, is what I'm being told, and that's called something, cement treated base. So what they do in lieu of hogging out all that material and removing it, they, they use a machine that pulverizes the asphalt and mixes it with what's underneath. In our case, it's not usually very good stuff, but it's better than what's deeply underneath, so. And then, after they do that, when we get towards the end of the project and we've run enough equipment up and down the road, and I can find where I've got some bad spots that need to be addressed in a different fashion, which will do similar to what we did on the other jobs, they come in and they lay down Portland cement in front of that machine, put a water line to that machine, and then they rototiller that, pulverize that one more time, and that material becomes a cement-treated base. And then they come along and they, they call it micro-cracking, and they break that base so that you don't get those cracks reflecting up through the pavement, which has been a problem in the past. So what the contractor said is, hey, would you consider a cement-treated base in lieu of what you have? And, and I networked with Plumas County and then discussed it with District Two as well, because the process involved with something called BECP, Value Engineering Cost Proposal, is if it saves the project money, fifty percent of the savings goes, goes to the contractor. That's the, that's the incentive for a contractor. In your case, the money is allocated, you know, it's not that we're going to, you know, it's not like you put it back in your pocket, but it still is a significant approach. So, to address our problems that we've had in the past, because I didn't want to, you know, end up with a brand-new road and two terrible roads, which we, you know, there'll still be some of that. I, I felt like that was appropriate. And, and so I presented that as well to District Two, they said they didn't have a problem with it. So the challenge with doing a project, if in this case, it's, it's a deduction, a, a cost deduction to the project. So I, I just conferred with John and asked, you know, how he felt about it, but I, I really don't have a lot of time sometimes to to authorize the work, and in this case, we're half-done. We've pulverized the road already. I authorize this work, but I need to have a, a change order approved by the city council, so it's a little bit after the fact, but there's really no, it's just like right now where I'm doing water line replacements. It's impossible for me to solicit from you whether you would approve that, and considering where we're at, I, you know, I don't think there was much really.
See, you haven't said anything?
He doesn't have it.
And asked
Oh, that's because I
Can I ask a question? So, Dan, you said that the water valves that are bad and the, and the piping, is is the city having to pay for that, or is part of the project money paying for that?
Well, as I did on the other projects, when we had similar problems, I process them as a change order, and it comes out of the project because it was necessary to do that in order to but, but for me to just, had I presented the plans to District Two and say, we're going to replace this water main, they would have said, no, you can't do that with this money. So I basically have to use it as problems develop.
Correct, I understand that. So, the savings that we're getting, will that retro back into what you're having to spend for the water?
It goes back in and, and they probably It, it goes back in and, and they probably, we've already used that all on water issues right now, so it's, it's.
So it's kind of a.
Yes.
Check of balance.
And, and this is a pretty significant deduction, but, um. I, I'd say you're probably. Well, here's a good example, today, uh, we're out there and they're placing that five-foot piece of PVC pipe in, in there. Where we cut the main to place this new corpse stop. Those two fittings, that, those two fittings that connected two water mains. They're two thousand dollars apiece, so four thousand dollars just for those two fittings. So that just tells you, kind of as numbers we're dealing with there, and, and you will eventually see that change order.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So my recommendation is that the council approve change order twenty-three dash oh-one and authorize the mayor's sign.
Yeah, but, anyone have a comment?
No, but I also agreed that the recommendation should be that to agree with the decision we already made. To do the work, so.
There's very mirrors around me, it's a lot, mature.
And just, it, it's just, you know, I don't know what the answer is, there's really no way for us to do a job. If I have to, if there was something significant. I'd go to John and we'd probably ask for a special meeting, but I, I just, you know. Like today, for example. Todd Roberts has asked me about rolled curves, he really wants to use rolled curves as the city standard. And I said. Um. Our standard doesn't include that, but I'll consider it, and today talking to the contractor, I said, do you have a template for a rolled curve? He said, we do. And that template would basically be the same quantity of concrete. So in that case, I'm gonna probably issue a build order and we'll probably end up with rolled curves on that. Part of the road, because we just tear them up every year.
The rolled curves are the ones that are, um, rounded?
Yeah, slightly rounded, and they, they aren't quite as of a deterrent for vehicles and pedestrians, and that's kind of the. The rub with rolled curves, but they're being used everywhere in California, and so, we're gonna try it on. So you approved a plan that had vertical curves, but I'm gonna issue a field order that's gonna change that, and I just. Will assume that that's gonna be okay with you.
And they're great for kids on bicycles and making little jumps.
And that's what I was just gonna say, it sounds like.
Okay, so with that, any questions from the council? I'm gonna make a motion to, um, approve change order number twenty-three oh-one.
I'll second.
No, motion is second, let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Council, uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tam Morton.
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jim Murphy.
Aye.
That's, that's three I's and a S.
Make sure the record requests that.
Item six.
Thank you very much. What, Mondays, okay, yeah.
Yeah, again with it, which is, I mean, most local governments favorite topic over years and years and years. Um, investment policy, uh, pay schedules and CCRs, five seventy dash five, resolution. Reduction in landfill closure fee and budget.
I don't think I could've put more things in one agenda item, if I had tried, unless maybe I had been on the transportation committee. So, as you all know, we started the budget process for twenty-three, twenty-four back in January, when we do that first calendar for the budget schedule. Staff starts working on the budget then, and we had public comment opportunities in March and in April. We had, um. The draft budget was presented to the council on May seventeenth, and again, and then we had the public hearing. On the budget, June fourteenth, where there were some changes that were made to that. And since that time, there has been one additional change, and that is the addition of the eighteen thousand three forty-seven oh-seven. Um, Latco. That we had discussed, discussed earlier, which is a, uh, one-time, hopefully. One-time addition to that. Uh, so tonight we have a number of resolutions, um. If it's okay, I'll take them one by one. So the eighteen thousand, whatever, it, to Latco, is that to help with the buyout for the one person? Thank you. Okay, so our first resolution is number two-five-five-zero, which is the resolution, city council approving the. And adopting the annual appropriations limit for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, you're all familiar with the, the quote GAN limit, which establishes a limit on the proceeds of taxes. That may be appropriated for spending in a given fiscal year. Back in seventy-nine, they established a, a number for everyone, and then every year, we get a price and population change. From the Department of Finance that we have to, uh, take that last year's number. And adjust it by the price and population factor, if the population goes down, we adjust that part negatively. Uh, and then we come up with our new number, which this year happens to be. Two nine five hundred fifty-eight thousand nine fifty-five seventy-nine. And the last time, um, I did the subject two taxes. For the city was twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, which includes things like property tax, sales tax, those things. And our limit was, um, seven hundred eighty-four thousand, so to say that we are way under our limit is understated.
Yeah.
So, um, that is never really a problem, so, um. We're looking at, um, adopting resolution two-five-five-zero to be in compliance with our annual appropriations limit.
Okay, any public comment? Seeing none? I'll ready to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution two-five-five-zero.
Motion in the second?
Second one's. Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tam Morton?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Potters?
Yes.
Three yeses and an I.
Just shake it up a little. Resolution number two-five-five-one is a resolution, city council acknowledging the review, receipt and filing of the statement of investment policy. It's an annual requirement, and we take care of this every year as part of the budget. There were no changes over last year, and as you know, our investment policy is very conservative. Um, if the council ever wants us to look at anything else, we certainly look within. One for law, but, uh, we have to adopt this, that's a. Matter of. City business.
We can follow your bovindas investment strategy.
What's that?
We can follow your bovindas, city or your bovindas investment strategy.
Or, you know, Orange County is really who started this mess, so.
I'll ready to take a motion. I'm not seeing any public comment.
I'll move, uh, with pass resolution. Twenty-five fifty-one, the resolution of the council. The city of Portola acknowledging review, receipt and filing of the statement of investment policy.
I'll second that.
Any, roll call please?
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tam Morton?
All right.
Mayor Powers?
Yes.
Three I's and a S, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, and the resolution two-five-five-two is a resolution for the city council, the city of Portola, adopting the pay schedule and job classifications. For twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, um, which is also the. Um, reference the CCR. Uh, five seventy-point-five, which is California Code of Regulations requirement for publicly available pay schedules. So the spreadsheet that you have is the pay schedule, but will be in effect on July first with the COLA. Uh, and then we have to show all the steps or any longevity, and that will be posted. Along with resolution to our website in compliance with, um, CCR five seventy-point-five. So, um, and we are looking for the adoption of the. Pay schedules and job classifications for twenty-three, twenty-one. So, did I ask a question? Mm-hmm, so, brand new person starts at step one, two, three, four, five, and then after that, it goes to the longevity, the L-one, L-two, L-three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, um, is this brand new starting this year? These step increases, or is it something that's been? Going on, the, the, the ones that you have on here right now, the hourly wage? Well, um, we're always gonna start with a new dollar amount, of course. But in terms of the steps, we used to have steps every year for the first ten years. Um, and kind of. Uh, response to what government agencies were doing all over the country, uh, that was seen as a very aggressive step program. And so the city council, five years ago, changed to a step every two years. And then the council, um, always tries to give a COLA. And in that in-between year, uh, and then, so the steps go up to year ten, and then longevity is fifteen, twenty, twenty-five. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, public comment? Seeing none? Um, we did motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-five five-two. I'll second it.
Please, roll call please.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tam Morton?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
All I, uh, see four hundred.
Right, uh, thank you again, uh, resolution number two-five-five-three is a resolution, the city council adopting the monthly rate for landfill closure post-closure fee. In the last few years, um, staff has felt like we could recommend to the council. A reduction in both the admin and solid waste and the landfill closure fee. But this year, um, due to a number of issues in solid waste, we felt that the only thing we could recommend was the. One-dollar decrease to the landfill closure fee, so it was seven thirty-eight. A month, and the recommendation and the resolution is to change that to six thirty-eight a month.
Okay. Public comment? Seeing none? Ready to take a motion?
I'll move, uh, with pass resolution number two-five-five-three. Adopting the monthly rate for nine of the.
I'll second.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tam Morton?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
All eyes.
Yeah, resolution number two-five-five-four, resolution for the city council adopting the operating budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. As you know, um, you've been over the worksheets a number of times, this is the adoption of the. Budget as, as it's been presented to you, it does explicitly state in here that we are. Um, balancing revenues and expenditures by using fund balance, something that, of course, we prefer not to do, but. Um. But we, but it is stated in here, uh, so at this point, um. Oh, and it, it also makes sure that it states that any funds that aren't used get returned to fund balances, and we don't. Do a use it or lose it budgeting, we've never had that attitude, I'll never have that attitude, you know? Um, so, we would appreciate a, uh. Uh, approval on resolution two-five-five-four.
Public comment? Seeing none? Ready to take a motion?
I move, uh, passage of resolution number two-five-five-four. Adopting the operating budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call please?
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tam Morton?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Eyes having. Pat, we don't just second that?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you. But, don't you have ten more? Wrong meeting.
Okay.
Hi Steve. Steve Wade, Steve Wade.
Thank you for your hard work, as always.
Thank you.
Now with that, uh, new, losing the turn. Losing is not a big.
Yeah, I, I, you're gonna say, so we gotta split it up, so we get, I didn't get it, uh, that's me. Sorry, I wasn't thinking of.